Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting for the town of Pompey, today being June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First off, if we could start by doing pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution. Quick interruption, introduction, it's been a long week already. Sue Smith, chairman of the planning board, to my far right, board member John Shaheen, Secretary Sarah LaJudas, to my left Carl Farrencrew, Dan Bargalas, Deb Hook, and Wilfred Zee. Kevin Corson is not able to be in attendance tonight. Town engineer John Dunkel, our planning board attorney, Amelia McLean Robertson. Our codes enforcement officer is running late, he will be here hopefully in about fifteen, twenty minutes. With that, we'd like to start with, we all had our direct minutes handed out and you have a chance to look over them. I know John had some corrections and Sarah's got those. Any others? Hearing none, I make a motion to approve the amendments as amended. Second by John, all in favor? Post, motion carries. First up, on our agenda tonight, Napa subdivision, it's continued review of a subdivision of two existing lots into three lots located at sixty-nine forty-one Cassandra Drive and forty-two seventy-one Gates Roads in the town of Pompey. Tax map number zero-zero-one dot dash zero-two dash fourteen dot four and zero-zero-one dot dash zero-six dash zero-four dot zero. Okay, nobody is here to represent them and we have received no updates during the past month. So we will continue on to the next agenda item. Whitefield Farm subdivision, continued review of a subdivision of five point six acre piece of land from a forty-five acre parcel located at the northeast corner of Gates and Hanoveri Roads at the terminus of Deer Crossing Road in the town of Pompey. Tax map number zero-zero-nine dot dash zero-two dash zero-eight dot two. How are you doing Lisa?
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, I have a few plans. I didn't get to make your video copy because I was going to do it so.
To Tim, who's not here yet.
But, pass them on. I have one final one, but then I had some.
Give her something there.
Here's the first one. I don't think you're going to like it.
Say that again.
I'm not sure if it has better than Hanoveri.
How far? How far?
Just four hundred and thirty feet. Far from the intersection?
Yeah.
It is pretty wide open there and it's.
It's good and bad.
I know there's been a lot of bad accidents at that intersection.
But it is.
Yeah, that one's a problem.
Which one?
Oh, no. Be up here.
Oh, never mind. What's wrong with that one?
Nothing, nothing. We had to look at both sides. Because I know he's going to want to look at it.
I saw it.
Oh, you saw it, right?
You did?
But just now.
Oh.
What jumped out at me is you can't do a right turn like that, you'll need to have a radius on the road, a curve, not a right angle.
So you don't want your proposed road to be a curve?
You'd have to relay those lots around the right angle.
So you still want it to come out on Hanoveri?
There's four hundred and thirty-one feet between that proposed road and the intersection of Gates and Hanoveri.
Not the best.
Why?
Proximity to the intersection, we don't like to have intersections.
On top of each other.
And it would, Hanoveri's a county road, isn't it?
But it does meet the criteria, I mean it's far enough away from the intersection. Like it's past where the Costello's come out on the other side.
Yeah, a private driveway is different than a public road.
Okay.
We'd have to have the county look at it.
This might be a better one, if you want to look at it. Sorry, what else? Is it that one? I mean, he could move it down, but if it goes bigger, you move it down?
Because like the first thing jumps is, you know, like if these are gradual, that's better than the hard angle.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Why don't you like the hard angle? I mean, I don't like it, but I'm just going to.
Because traffic wise or something.
So it's the last thing you could, you know, like.
Yeah, I don't know why, yeah, I see what you're saying now, okay.
Longly during the winter.
Oh, I see. Okay, don't spend too much time on that, Dan. Okay, I see now. This one might be better.
Yeah.
So we're going to do a good, better, best?
That would be best. Now I see why that one's not good.
Where'd it go? Over here. Which you said that that could be.
So actually, I'm sorry, these might be all the same.
This one.
Very similar.
Well, it's, yeah, this one under the map is more rounded. Then there's cul-de-sac here.
What else you got?
This one.
I'm here.
And then the one Dan has.
What's the other one?
Just two of them are slightly different.
These all have two hundred feet of frontage. All the lots have two hundred feet of frontage.
I asked, Gary said yes. Wait, you mean each lot has two hundred feet in the lot? And he said yes.
This one it has in there. What exactly?
Like this is the one you need.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Because I don't know where.
Is this going to be a farm?
Oh, this one here?
No, the house would go here.
So what's?
So it's better to just have this come through and there's a cul-de-sac?
This is limestone.
Do we have a limit on cul-de-sac? That's a possibility of doing this.
Yeah, but still, I don't, I think this would be an issue. Much like that one.
We're doing cul-de-sacs now?
As opposed to. I guess I would defer to, I would superintend which is preferable.
Yeah, we're talking, if it went through and it was cul-de-sac, then let's go on.
Is this another option?
Because this road coming on here is still a problem.
Yeah. Coming out here.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be.
Which, the other question is, if that came out here. What's the topography? And if this was moved here, what becomes too close or too busy?
Well, it will depend on the available site distance to Gates Roads.
I don't know, blank, is Gates Road flat there or is it?
It's flat up, it's flat up until where my property ends, pretty much.
Within your property?
Mm-hmm. The property not where it's at, but yeah, up the road is and then just about where I, you know, where my property ends, it starts to go now.
And then my breakdown here eventually. There's one or two of them. There's a very significant stream. No, that's okay, there's an intersection, sorry. One plan they didn't have this.
Problem, no, they don't have a problem.
Oh, cul-de-sac.
Why didn't, is there, why didn't you just go curve this? Well, it could jump. Should that now allow lots access?
I think he just wrote a third line of his mother.
Yeah.
Just here and then.
This came out on the Hanoveri, so close to the gates.
So it didn't go out onto Gates at all?
If we wanted, or doesn't want it to be through, or you want it to be through?
Oh, okay, no. Hold on, where, or, oh, so it just ended here?
No, to come out and make a cul-de-sac here.
Oh, for all these?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe we don't.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
What happened to that there now?
That's a different.
Tim, Hanoveri is a county road.
Yeah, but it's a T.
Have you seen any respective ideas?
Yeah, the property.
Yeah.
So.
So there's a hammerhead here.
So I just wanted to end it here and then have lots going out here. Lots going, okay, lots going out and everybody had ended it. They didn't want that to, you know, well, to avoid lots of people exiting. Driveways, a lot of the driveways on Gates and.
I'm sure you don't want to decelerate.
Take our comments. So take our comments and then go back to your surveyor and come up with one plan that's.
Which are you leaning towards?
We can't tell you that to do.
We want me to do more of a curve is what you're saying.
That would be a big thing is curves versus a hard right angle, that there's no possibility of a thoroughfare or, you know.
If you're proposing a new town road to come out on either Gates or Hanoveri, you need to have your surveyor contact the county highway department to see where acceptable entrance would be, because the board is going to definitely want to know that.
That they approved it?
Yes.
Before I come back?
It's an approvable location.
Oh, okay.
Yes, because that's going to drive your layout.
I think it's approvable.
But we need to know the county.
Well, you may go down and find out that it's not, after you've spent a lot of money, so it's not a bad thing.
You mean just my surveyor, not before I take it to the engineer? Because, I mean, Gary.
I mean, it's a survey question.
Has been doing this for like sixteen.
More than qualified to determine or sort that out for you.
Yeah, I mean, he told me everything was, nothing required.
I do, but Gary is not the county highway.
Yeah, but he usually was checked, okay.
So if he does, or he has, that's great, Shandys.
You wanted a thing?
I'm sure.
Yeah?
No, I'm just saying.
Eventually, yes, that'd be boiled into a question.
But I think from a criteria standpoint, to me, we'd want to have at least one exit on either Hanoveri or Gates.
Correct, yes.
Because Winsbury is already pretty large.
Correct, that's a long.
Yeah, we brought that up last week.
But I'm just trying to give her like criteria and then she can take the creative aspect of it all. As long as you could come up with an exit on, you know, that's acceptable to the county or the town.
On one of those roads, just so we eliminate that dead end.
And we don't want a right angle road.
Okay.
Unless it's an intersection.
Do we have a limit on cul-de-sacs? I'm trying to find it here.
So.
Do we, Tim?
If he makes this.
There's a limit.
Makes this so that it's not an angle.
We're trying to find it now.
Was, was this acceptable? If he does, if he makes it so it's not an angle and it curves, but then there's only one exit?
Well, again, and just make sure that location is approval.
Okay, I mean, it's, that one's right in the center.
But it's the distance from an existing.
Intersection.
Intersection that also has a history.
Right.
So the last thing anybody wants to do is add another ingress or egress pretty close to a known intersection for excellence.
Yeah.
So whether it's visibility or speed or whatever, but all of a sudden, you gotta think about, the county would be thinking about that, okay, maybe if that's got X number of houses on that section, you're still going to probably have people coming in from homes already built, coming out that way, because that might be closer getting out to a main road.
People at Winsbury may find it more convenient to come out that direction, so, but, you know, Gary, to me, would be a good starting point, have that conversation with, because if he says, no, this isn't going to work, then you can focus on coming out on Gates.
Okay, I mean, I told Gary to take it out on Gates and he said this was a better option and, I mean, all the, he does check all the measurements and he did go over all the numbers.
Yeah, and I'm not saying one's better.
We're not saying ones, yeah, but we are strongly advising, go to the county and find out if that works in that location.
Okay.
That's. We don't want to give a lot of legwork and then find out, no, you've got, hey, we have to scrape everything and then spend, reinvent the wheel again.
Okay.
So. Otherwise, you can also, Tim, Michelle, Tim, please hear.
Okay.
May, something may jump out at him too for suggestions and things to look for.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
I have to have mine back first. Do we have an answer?
And one more thing, it may also go through Gary to talk to our own highways contender to see what their standards are, what he needs, whether it's a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead, which he would prefer.
But a general highway spec would be good to have, so she has her.
Yes.
Can start to ascertain the cost of the road, give it to a contractor.
Right.
Just to get an idea of where you're heading.
I did get cost of roads for these.
For cross-sections?
You know, like the.
Pavement thickness.
Yeah, yeah, it's called tolling.
So if it's. But if it's a hammerhead or cul-de-sac, that's going to have a big impact on the cost of the road.
Yeah, now you lay out your lots too, it's a whole different approach when there's a hammerhead.
Well, that's what they have at the end, that must be what they have.
Hammerhead.
And when I was developing, that was the preferred way to handle square in the town of Pompey, was hammerhead. That may have changed. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
The preferred method for building a road was to construct a hammerhead, not a cul-de-sac.
In Tom Tarradino's day, I think it was.
Yeah.
Well, his presence is still felt.
Anyway, so those two.
All right, you ever get the cul-de-sac or?
We're not finding it in here.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
I can talk to Gary if we need to.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Stringer subdivision, preliminary review of a two lot residential subdivision located on Orange Station Road in the town of Pompey, tax map number zero-zero-five dot dash zero-two dash zero-one dot six.
I'm Bob Focello from Dave Hanek's office.
One more.
Dave's filing the last two lots in the town of Pompey that matched a preliminary plan exactly. And Ed Reed did perk tests on them just recently, he was getting septic approved down at the town, because the perk was very good.
Somebody's going to slide back from here.
You got a big one?
You want a bigger one?
You guys. You want a bigger one? Yes.
Oh, I got that one. Okay, so this was a part of the original.
Well, preliminary plan.
Plan back.
They're down there in sixteen, that's it. E-five now, so they have two lots.
Yeah, how many were the original total?
It's like sixteen or something. They were in there. He filed everything but these two, the last two in Maryland Land. I was working on it from seventy-seven. I think seventy-seven I started in.
Wow, that was a long time. So we've seen this fairly recently, a couple other things re.
Yes.
Re-allocated, but they were up off of.
Yeah, he did up, here he did a couple, he did, now here, this he sold to his brother, his wife, and his friend, they sold it and added it to their property to the south, the two lots there.
This lines up where the two for sale signs are?
Yes, I believe so. I haven't seen them, but I believe they're.
Was, was there a variance granted for lot four sixty-two when the preliminary plan was approved? I don't believe there's two hundred feet of frontage there.
He edited it out, it was.
Does it?
You gotta add forty-three and one forty-eight.
And eight, one five. Does it make it?
This one was approved, yeah, no bad.
Maybe if we ask a good surveyor or an engineer, we could have. I need a calculator.
You survey.
It's a sad.
Yeah.
Read them again?
I know Tim looked at it.
Yeah, we're sitting.
He said he only had a hundred forty, he didn't want the thing read. And forty-three point one. You got a fifty-three, so it's forty-three, so it's still going to be two hundred exactly. It's two hundred.
Made it?
Yeah.
This is what was in the original plan, nothing's changed.
Yeah, nothing's changed. There's the original preliminary plan of it, so.
It says this is as presented in the original preliminary plan, nothing's changed on these two lots. Nothing's changed. Do we have anything, Tim?
No, we spoke together this time.
It's already been approved?
Yeah.
So just coming in for a smile approval? What's the issue? Is there?
I don't think there's one.
You have the perk results next to your, or next to?
He just told me that the perks were really good, surprised him, and then he, he was driving with the plans and taking them down to Jeff Till, he was hoping to have them approved before the meeting, but I haven't heard from him. But I only go in to work for five or six hours a week.
So if you don't have the perk results, then you just need that condition, that it's not a building lot until. Lot, until the subject system is approved.
I assume, like distance will be okay?
True there.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Pretty even grade bounds for there.
Yeah.
Actually, that's right where it curves. It should have been looked at on the preliminary plan.
Yeah. Yeah. There's far worse curves on that road. So we got to come back next month for?
No, you just do the usual, no, it's not an approved building plan until.
I got to do a public hearing.
Okay, nevermind.
Okay, I feel better now. So. Next month?
Next month, when it's updated.
July?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Okay.
You going to be in town?
Yep, I will send you.
I better be this year, I missed my daughter's birthday on the fifteenth last year. I was out camping.
They'll send you the list of addresses.
Okay.
All that good stuff. You're going to hang out with these or you leave?
No, I don't. I've got plenty, I've got a couple here. Oh, the Mileirs and such, yeah.
Some of it's good.
Pardon?
You keep them, bring them back, and everything's good next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I have a little one, which is really better.
I don't, I just know that in other towns, I don't need one. Just because I had one on the whole plan already.
Right, that's what I meant.
So when I come in for my, so a lot of builders are doing it now, just save on property taxes, so we don't file a whole entire map, we might get the whole entire road approved and taken over by a town. I Sam is a great example. And then we go in, when we're ready, when we sell the property, then we go, we might only get one lot approved, or we might get five lots approved.
The only question is whether a public hearing is needed, because Tim did one for the preliminary, the overall preliminary.
I think we've always come back with a public hearing on each.
Yeah, I mean, it's your discretion.
You got anything on that, Amelia?
No, it's fine, I mean, because if it is the other way, as you suggested, like we're doing my standard, it should be marked differently on here, because we're marking them all as preliminary view, which.
And that's. I've usually done it, it's a two. I would usually done it, it's a two ones. In for preliminary, if there's no changes, and back on that. On Hogan Sub. Hogan subdivision.
Yep.
Uh, preliminary review of the subdivision located at twenty thirty-four on Delphi Road in the town of Pompey. Tax map number zero three two dot dash zero four dash zero nine dot two. Elizabeth?
Yes. This is a super preliminary sketch. Because it's creating sort of odd shaped properties, so before I had it surveyed, I wanted to make sure it would be acceptable. And part of the reason that is, is that, so this is my parents' property, was the end of my grandfather's farm, so I grew up in Delphi and town Pompey. But my father's driveway comes in over here and up to their house up here. So we would share, there'd be a driveway easement, we would share the driveway, my driveway will come up this side. But the two, so the two hundred feet of road frontage here. And then we cut in, just because if we came straight up over, the driveway easement would be almost my father's entire driveway, which seemed like a really large easement to have to do.
Um, for people's bearings, um, on Delphi Road, and this is.
This is the road, this is the, this is the cemetery.
South of the four corners.
Oh, yeah.
And this is right next to the cemetery, so it's close, actually, the driveway.
Go over the hill, yeah, that's where you go over the hill.
But that driveway is right on the.
Right, and the reason that we're gonna share a driveway, I'll explain that, when my parents first put their house up, their driveway was over here. And they had many accidents of people hitting their culvert, coming down the hill, hitting the culvert, flipping, and having accidents. So they went through the process of, um, my grandfather still owned the property, but at that point, I think he allowed some form of easement or something. Um, and they moved the driveway so that that no longer happens. So that's why I'm now putting in a separate driveway. First of all, theirs is really close here, so it wouldn't really be enough space, and.
Can you take a couple steps?
Sorry.
Backwards?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So they can see too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Where's the driveway now?
The driveway is approximately right here.
Yes, you have easement across that.
So the easement would be, yeah, this, it'd be like the easement here. But if we went up over straight, it would take up almost all my dad's driveway, she wasn't very comfortable. And then this pops back out in order to make the two acres.
When they had all the accidents, it was farther to the north?
It was farther this way, yeah, surprisingly enough, it was less on the curve than it.
Yeah, I know, I know, I can see why that would happen, yeah. Get off.
I mean, usually they were one AM in the morning.
Yeah.
But, but, it's the truth, but still, it would happen, and then people would, um.
No, yeah, I got you.
You know, get an accident there, and the cemetery driveway is right there, like it practically hits the corner of the property, right there in the cemetery driveway.
I think where you've drawn that proposed line doesn't create two hundred feet of frontage for the.
I may not have done the exact map, but there's, um, there's plenty of frontage in total, so when the surveyor comes, he'll make sure that there's.
There's more than four hundred feet.
I just kind of added a post there in the hopes of making it right, because total frontage they have, I think it's four thirty-five.
It's enough.
Yeah. It could be, and also part of the reason, this spot, so again, this line might change a little bit angle wise, um, there's a tree right there. So we were like, that's perfect, it can be sort of a marker, we can go to the tree, and then up over where we need to, just to give it a more basic marker of what already exists there.
You? I'm trying to look here.
Oh, yeah.
So where am I looking, where's the tree?
It's that tree right there, oopers. Yeah. It's the tree that's on the high side of the driveway now, this tree, oh, sorry. I have a Google map photo. That would be helpful.
Yeah, that's my thing.
Yeah, our entire, everything.
Tim, you've been down and looked at this, right? Or familiar?
Twenty thirty-four on Delphi.
There's like two trees in this.
There's two trees, and it's the one, it's the high one, yeah. So it's gonna come, I think this is the tree, my dad always says the orange tree, it's gonna come up to there, and then it'll pop back out a little bit as my dad's. Let's see if we came straight up through, it would take a lot of my dad's driveway, which he would prefer not to do. Not sure why, he informed me the other day he's gonna die in that house, so I don't sure why it matters, where that, where that line goes, but.
Yeah, but he could live another thirty years.
I'm supposed to be living next door, giving him dinner every night, as I've been told, this is the.
So I'm gonna play the devil's advocate.
Go right ahead.
Of, okay, we subdivide it, and you've got the easement, and you've got the driveway going across the property and so on, but. Someday somebody's gonna pass away or decide to move, or a family's fat or whatever, but you gotta think, everybody can be very handshake when you get along today, but what about tomorrow? How's this driveway easement gonna work for either selling or the next person coming in?
It's gonna be written as a legal easement, probably for X amount of a hundred years or whatever. However, the real estate, or the real estate lawyer writes it as a legal easement, it will not be just an agreement with, between my father.
Also trying to point out that if it's not your dad, if it's not a relative, that you're gonna be working with somebody else on that driveway too.
Then I have to work with someone else on that driveway. I, I understand mostly because where I grew up, which was right in town, there was a easement for the farmer through my dad's yard, for the farmer to get to the lot out back. So my dad always did like the upkeep of it, but the farmer, I mean, and now asked, needed, so.
Well, and that's the thing.
And the property.
For upkeep and.
The property I live on right now also has an easement for a farmer, um, that we share the upkeep. Um, well, that we can also written into it technically, technically, because this will be my property now, the easement will fall from them onto my property, so technically, probably, I have the upkeep, I would say. I'm not sure what the lawyer will say, but I would say technically, I would have the upkeep of that. I'm just kidding, because he has it beautifully kept, um, um, so technically, I would have the.
As long as it's addressed somehow.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, it would totally be legally addressed, because, yes, they're both in their mid seventies, and then at some point, yeah, that's, that's gonna.
Is it gonna split around where that tree is, to go to your house, to tell why that?
Not where the driveway is, no, the driveway's gonna come in, the driveway is, I'm gonna come into the driveway off the road, sorry. And it's gonna immediately left and follow right up the cemetery.
So they're only.
Yeah, so the, the actual easement of how much we're gonna use together is small. The only reason it's a little larger is because of your two hundred feet that you, that you need to have, you can't just come in and, yeah. Yeah, so the, the actual shared part is gonna be really.
Yeah.
Tiny down here, because we're hoping the, my house has to be built way on top of the knoll, there's just in the middle, mine has to be on top, um, because the layup of the land, so. They're hoping the cemetery woods will give my driveway some, uh, coverage for winter.
Have you done any perk tests or?
Have not yet, that's what, one of the questions I had tonight is, if this appears to be an acceptable layout, can I start perk testing? I've never done this before, so this is all new for me, I did have someone come out and wish the property, tell me where they thought water, this water wells would be laid. The excavator was my cousin, he came out, walked the property with me, he's someone who told me where he thought my house should be, he thinks we should perk test back in here, because the property.
Where did the, they think the well might be?
Uh, here, there were two, um, there were two, one that was lower, one that was about right here, yeah, probably about right there, to the front of the house. Perk would be to the back, the septic would be to the back, I know it needs to be a hundred feet for, on the Doggett County. Yeah, I've talked to the county a couple of times, just because this is my first time.
And then that swell goes away where the septic might be?
Yeah, it would drop down, yeah.
Your house would be on like the high point, and the well would be in front?
The well would be in the front, the perk would be in the back. And I personally would like to push it back, because I'd like to fence in my yard, and I really don't want the septic in my yard helping, so. Like to push it back to wherever it can be legally compared to this property.
John, you gonna comment initially?
For the formal submission to the board, you'll need to have all the buildings located, all the features located, they're on the ground, and make sure that the setbacks are met, and that. All of the wells and septic systems for your dad's property are contained on the lot you created.
Okay, yeah, so that should all be done via the surveyor, correct? He should be responsible for doing all that.
And the board is gonna wanna see, before they give any final approval, they're gonna wanna see the language of that easement.
Okay, so I can call the lawyer.
Have it shown clearly on the map. How wide is it?
Yeah, I'll make sure the surveyor shows the easement, sorry, I have to write some stuff.
What's that?
Need a formal map to really look at. Any other comments from us? Where are your father's septic and well? Just so they don't come.
So my dad has a spring.
Okay.
And that's, uh, way down in the right hand corner of his property. So my dad has a spring, and it, well, I should say, uh, their house is right about here, where it does, I was not showing, um, it's, it's right about here, and it runs down through. He has a big pond down here, his spring is there, that's his water, his septic.
Because his septic has to be a hundred feet away from where you're planning to put your well.
I wanna say his septic is up in here. Because he sits in the middle of the hill, and then the hill crests over, so. So. I believe his is here.
I didn't hear you.
He asked me what the setback was for septic system. To find it, it's, it's a health requirement.
That's at least a hundred and fifteen, so maybe two hundred now to keep changing it.
No, that's between well and septic, right now, he's asking property laws.
And I think that, you know, that.
Okay, I was just wondering, so that you don't put your well there and his septic is.
But do you think it's a good idea to have the driveway, the house and everything on it, just to save time?
On the drives?
Driveway, the septic, the well.
Yes.
Yeah, he said everything that's on my dad's property has to be put on, and then.
You guys don't wanna approve a site plan yet for the new lot. That's how you, you might talk about that.
No, it might just be next time.
Existing of what's there, so you know, when you're subdividing it, that it meets code. Does county need to comment on a shared driveway access like this, considering location?
You get my cheek cheek here.
Yeah, it's.
Not necessarily county planning with county highway, or, I don't know.
No, some divisions are general, though. My, my investment creation of up to three lots, no county.
Any questions?
I just, if, yeah, if I wanna rewrite everything that I will need for the next meeting, so if I can just go there really quick. So, um, I'll have the full survey done that shows the easement and all the direct measurements of that. You want, where all of my dad's stuff is located, septic, um, spring, all of that measured. Uh, I'm okay to do a perk test and have that put on for the surveyor? That's.
If you have it, then, then the board doesn't need to put that condition on.
Okay. Okay, but I can't have, I can only, I can show where a potential well would be, but I can't have a well drilled, because it's not a lot yet, right?
It's the septic that drives.
Okay, it's a septic, okay.
Drives a building lot.
Okay, all right. Oh, you want legal verbiage for the easement?
And it should be showing the strong.
Legal verbiage.
No, the easement, just the.
Yeah, he'll, yeah, I'll make sure he puts that on. If I get going and I have questions, who's the best person to talk to?
Tim.
Or Tim, I've already, I've already ordered Tim's line, because I've never done this, and my parents did their, did it thirty-seven years ago in their house, so they have no idea. Yeah, my dad's, what it up? Um, okay, so, but, but generically. The misshape of this property seems acceptable if the surveyor has it laid out right, and you're happy with all the other measures. Okay. I'll make sure the root of it I'm okay with until we get a silver one too. Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have a, do we have a filing deadline here for getting on the attendance, so we get the information before?
First of the month.
Did you hear that?
First of the month?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a caller already into the surveyor, um, asking him to pencil me in, um, but as soon as I know, I don't know, I mean.
The reason for that is so that we've got time to get it disseminated, and we can look through it, so like, what happened earlier, you know, with things looking, it's the first time we looked at it.
Obviously, I'm gonna.
If we can look at things at a time.
But I completely understand, because I live in the town of Lincoln, and I sat on the variance board, so I totally understand, and so I understand people coming in with the written, and it being confusing, but I understand, and Tim was nice enough to get me in for this meeting. And if he has it done in time, and I can get it in the first of the month, so be it, and if not, then I'll have to, I'll have to do what I have to do. I can't, I can only control the others just so much, but.
Understood.
I appreciate you clarifying that for me, so, so we'll do what we can. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. Anything from anybody else here? If not, motion to adjourn?
Ooh, that was quick. A second now.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.